Good evening, everyone. Go ahead. I would like to call the Reading Board of Education meeting to order on Tuesday, December 5th, 7:00 PM. And the first item on the agenda, or the second item on the agenda, is an election of a board, a board chairperson. At this time, are there any nominations for chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Nora.
Okay, we don't need a second, so we have one nomination. Are there any other nominations? All right, I still think we should vote. I'm going to hand out some slips. And you can write the date, position for which we're voting on, the candidate, and your name. We've seven. Yes, we did. Okay, so we have six votes for our new chairperson. Congratulations to Nora. And it's over to you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is election of officers. So we will fill the vice chairperson first. Do we have any nominations? Let me nominate Nora. Okay, Nora, are there any other nominations? Okay. Okay, so we have six votes for Nora, for our new vice chair. And the next position is secretary. Do we have nomination for secretary?
I nominate Amanda.
Okay, Amanda, any other nominations? Okay, so. Okay, and we have six votes for Amanda. Congratulations, Amanda. Before we get started, I would like to amend the agenda to add an item 9E for committee appointments. Are there any objections? Okay, absent objections, we will add item 9E committee appointments to the agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda for approval of minutes from the October 24th and November 7th meetings. Are there any comments or corrections to minutes? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Nora, is there a second? May I? Okay, all in favor? Okay, and minutes are approved. Okay, that was at least a public comment. Okay, any board member comments?
I'd just like to welcome all the new members of the Reading Board of Education. Welcome, you sort of all of you.
Yeah, I second that. Welcome to all our new members. Ask lots of questions since they're all new. There's a lot of terminology that will come up, so please ask questions and jump in as much as you'd like. Okay, the next item on the agenda is administrative reports.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations and welcome to our new Board of Education members. We usually start off administrative reports with a welcome and a report from our administrators. So we'd like to start with Melissa LaBroschiana, who was the principal of Reading Elementary School, who can present a report, which is also in your packet.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I want to just highlight a few happening that have passed and that are coming out at RIS. So first, one of my favorite things of the year, which is our Veterans Day celebration, which happened on November 10th. This year, our four days to get council, with the support of Mr. Gaitan and his wife, our fourth day of teacher. Really an amazing, amazing event. We had almost double of the veterans that we had last year representing all of the branches of government, or I'm sorry, all the great branches of office, and it was really, really spectacular and really special. And thank you for performing on those, I'm really excited as well. It's really great to be there. And I also want to share that we are bringing back our chorus concert to Meadow Bridge. Meadow Bridge is the senior center in Reading. And I guess historically, prior to COVID, our chorus group used to come and sing holiday songs. And we'll be doing that again this December. And something new at RIS, we, the Climate Committee has been really, really hard on developing a shared language for all of our students and staff. So some feedback that we received as administrators is that it's really difficult when we have substitutes and lunch monitors and resource supervisors, that people that aren't necessarily in the classroom on a day-to-day. And so part of developing Rocky last year, our school logo, was to develop kind of a catchphrase, our acronym. So we came up with the word pause for Rocky's pause. And each letter of the pause word represents something different. So the P stands for positive attitude, the A is act responsibly, the W is work hard, and the S is spread kindness. And so you'll often now hear us start to say that we use our pause every day at RIS. And we are rolling that out to staff next week at our December faculty meeting. And then we are rolling that out and let each word mean its attributes to students at our whole school assembly and chair. But something new, so if you have kiddos at RIS, you can start asking them if they're showing their pause. But we hope to make posters and signs and just have more of a shared language with our students and staff. And I do want to acknowledge these statues. For those of you who don't know, but Mr. Robert Burnkey was principal at RIS for 25 years. He passed away this week. I had the pleasure of meeting Bob and like Bobby in the fall of 2022, when we unveiled the beautiful mosaic that was dedicated in his honor. I'm hanging outside of RIS when he first walked in. It's like really sad. I had an opportunity when we met, I walked around with Bobby and even meeting Mr. Burnkey. He touched so much accolades and joy talking about RIS. And so I just don't speak for myself of the whole RIS community and standing on people's hands to him and saying. Any questions?
Thank you for extending the invite to the Better in the State Assembly. That's one of my favorite events.
It is.
See everything, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our guest, our board members, to John Reed. And I have a few things to mention from our report. Number one, I'd like to take time to recognize Danielle Lingo, our eighth grade English teacher. She was one of sixteen semifinalists for the state teacher of the year honor. And out of all the districts in Connecticut, to have one of sixteen, it's quite an accomplishment. We'd like to recognize her. Today, and this is not in our report, we had a group of seventh and eighth graders go to the Metropolitan Museum of Art. These were seventh and eighth grade art students. And they worked with their teacher, Bonnie Fee, to organize the trip. They made connections and visited the galleries that linked directly to what they're learning in class. And in a traffic time versus a visit time, I think it all panned out. They had a good time. I also want to thank our fifth grade math teachers, Brian Donnelly and Amy Macarelli. And then Karen Wilson, who is our K8 math director. Is that who did it for in here? I get all these terminologies, all the terminology messed up. And Michelle Schefatelli, who's our seventh grade math teacher. They did a parent's night on how parents could help their students with math homework and solving math problems. And one of the joyous parts of the evening was to see students sitting with their parents after a problem was presented from the new textbook, Desmos, in seventh grade, and having the students teach their parents how to approach it. And we're trying as a school to do a few more of these nights so that we can work in community more and we're all helping students together. So it's a really, really good night. And then I want to thank the John Reed PTA for sponsoring David Flood. So David Flood came and we had two full satime assemblies in the gymnasium. And his message is one of, hey, show up. It kind of builds on what Melissa was saying about pause. And he put a challenge out to our students. He said, you know, look on the inside. Are you, when you look in the mirror, are you the same person that you are when you're hanging out with your friends? And if not, why not? And then he said, be thankful. Go around and thank you. Thank your parents, thank your teachers, thank your classmates. And then no one eats alone. No one eats alone. And then come from having a student who, his own child's autistic. And some kids at this school, his son attended, simply showed up. They just showed up and they helped his son navigate it. So that message of kindness and then the PTA worked with the Mark Twain Library for an evening event. And again, it's how we get community together and all work toward a similar goal. But that's kind of it.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So moving right along to Dr. Pierce and Yugo, who's going to present a curriculum update.
Yeah, so my rating report provides you a curriculum update in many different content areas. I want you to have on your radars some things that are likely going to find their way into our budget proposal for next year, including some additional math professional learning that we're looking forward to expanding. And that is to supplement our core programs with additional problem-solving experiences. And that really helps to increase the rigor of the mathematics experience for students in grades K through eight. You all today also received the reading waiver update that we've been really talking about with this board for many months. You did finally hear back from the state. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about either my rating report or the panelist.
The waiver, so we are. It was a conditional approval?
Conditional transitional approval. So what that means is that the state more specifically approved the phonemic awareness and phonics component of what we submitted to them. So that was our use specifically of foundations integrity in the early primary grades. We were not approved for the areas of vocabulary fluency or comprehension. And that was the Teachers College Unit's study portion of what was submitted. So that leaves us with some options and also some time to make decisions. So we can continue, we can expand the implementation of Amplify CKLA, which is the Core Reading Program that we're piloting. We could consider looking at some other compilations that have been approved by the state. What they also did in addition to responding to districts who submitted a waiver request is they added to the list of approved programs. So the biggest change is that they have not only approved a couple of additional core programs, but they've also allowed for a few compilations. And that was a big question, especially among districts in this area. Would the, would the State Department of Education allow districts to use a combination of resources and not just Core Reading Program?
Okay, great.
Is there like a, I know it's for that 25, 26 school year. Is there a cutoff time as far as training the teacher? Is it by summer of 2025? Or when do we need to make a decision about?
So two different questions. So I see the PD need as being ongoing. The core program approach is a big shift to the instruction and the way that we develop reading and writing skills in children, because the core program approach is much more of a whole class approach as opposed to being individualized. So our work at the district level means that we have to take that core program and then look at our schedule and figure out how we build in the things that we really value. So that includes time for independent reading, being sure that there's small group directed instruction going on, even if the program itself doesn't provide that within the sort of the teacher's manual. So that's not only professional development, but that's also curriculum writing time. So that's something that I need to consider in terms of my budget in the curriculum writing time request. In terms of a timeline to make decisions, some of this is connected to grant funding. So the state, the state has a third round of right to re-grant funding that we can apply for this month. So we're looking at what we might request this month. So that could be for the teachers that want to continue with CKLA, purchasing more of the readers. And those are sort of the, the old-fashioned term is like a Baile anthology. So they're the stories that are all bound together. And that would help the teachers with their pilot implementation. I suspect that there might be some additional rounds of grant funding, since as I said, I know this is really non-funded funding. So the grant funding allows us to at least provide partial funding to get the materials that we need for teachers even to explore these things. We're also in touch with districts in our area who are trialing different resources to see if we can visit those districts, to see if we can learn more about it through the users. Of course, what you hear from the salesperson, it might be different than what you hear from the user. So the nice thing is that we do have until the 25, 26 year to have a program in place. And it's very important that Easton and Reading have the same program in place, because we also want science and social studies to be integrated to the extent possible so that it all sort of fits together.
Yes, I just had a clarifying question about something I'd read in your email. So the grant that you're talking about that might come from the state is there to offset the federal funding that we wouldn't get because we're not implementing right now one of the programs they want us to implement? Is that correct?
No, the grant funding is only made available to districts that are implementing one of the core programs. So the only way we could have access to that grant funding is by saying we want to trial one of these core programs. If we said we want to use this money to purchase a supplement, they wouldn't give us the money.
Okay, okay. So the Amplify CKLA, is that one of the programs they want us to use?
It is one of the approved, it is one of the approved state programs, yes. So at the time that we were doing our research last year, it was one of the six approved programs. And the reading specialists, the literacy specialists tonight, spent a lot of time analyzing every single one of the approved programs and ultimately eliminated most of them, had it boiled down to two, and then ultimately one went pilot.
How is that going so far?
Well, you know, the feedback that I received from teachers and from parents generally was quite positive. It's going well. It's not without flaws. It's not a perfect program. No program is perfect. As I said before, the program requires a little bit of modification on the part of our teachers working with the literacy leaders to be sure that they build in time for the components that are not there on the front. So it's actually, I would say, going pretty smoothly at RIS. And St. Elstaples, their budget in Easton, their, I'm sorry, not their budget. Their schedule is a little bit different and they have some more limitations.
Okay, last but not least is Sarah Stefani, who is our Director of Finance Operations and Technology. And Sarah typically provides an overview of where we are financially, which has been challenging this month because we're in the process of doing an update to our system that manages our finances called e-finance.
I was able to get some good, I was able to do some. So our program is, normally this will be included in your board report. It's not this month, as we are in the process of updating our financial software to the latest version for January 1st. So that rule number will happen on Friday. So generally speaking, you'll get two reports every month. One of them is a budget update summary, and it walks through all the pieces of our budget. And the other one is an employee benefits account report. And so one of them has to do with healthcare and our healthcare fund. And the other one has to do with our general fund. And of course, they are connected together, plus the summary.
Don't, let me walk you through, yeah, let me walk you through. Let me walk you through some, some high points and of what exactly you're looking at. So in the, in the budget update summary, what you'll see is a delineation of our general fund. And so, for example, in 102 is the account code for administration salaries. And you'll notice there's two location codes. There's 23 and 24. And so 23 is John Reed and 24 is RIS. And what this will show you is the budget allocation for 23, 23, 24. It will show you the month-to-date expenses, the year-to-date expenses, what's encumbered. So what we plan on spending, what's unexpended, and what percentage of the budget that is. So that's in general how the, how the report works. There are a couple of things to keep in mind. A lot of, a lot of the areas of salary will not show encumbrances until this month. And so we see them now. That's when all that information has been put in from payroll and is updated. So the September and October encumbrances. And usually this month, there's a little bit of some variation as there are some changes or updates to salary and pay grades in that area. We don't encumber for some things that we, we don't encumber for things like substitutes or substitute caras, because we know that those are, while we know that those are going to be expended, we don't have a good sense for exactly how much that will be. And so those are more year-to-date. But if it's a planned expense, then you'll see it as an encumbrance. Some of the lines you'll see are over, are not, are, will have, the parentheses means that they are, they're a negative at this time. And sometimes that means that we're waiting on some grant funding to come back to us. Or sometimes that means that there are some accounts where we're waiting for, for example, for pre-K. We have tuition payments for our pre-K program. And so those offset the costs and those come through throughout the year three or four times. So that's one of the things that you'll notice as you go through. Right now, in this budget report, there's not, there's not really, this is very anticipated. There are not, there's not really anything here that, that is something to sort of bring the board's attention to. We're on track with our spending. We're on track with where we should be. And so our, all of our lines are looking, you know, are looking right in line with, as expected for this time of the year. So as you look through here, because you're new to seeing this, I also think that going through the budget process with all the budget sheets, if you go online to our budget website, each one of these areas actually is tagged and has a cost center that's associated with it. So you'll be able to drill down through. And right now, we're in the process of building that out for our coming budget discussions and sort of our budget season that's up and coming. So that's a little bit about this month report that you'll see. And I'll let you know if there's, if there's anything that, that you should, that I'm keeping an eye on and that you should be hyprized of as we go through. And if you do have any questions about this, because it's the first time that you're seeing it, you can always just reach out and send me an email. I'm happy to answer those questions or as well, or.
Okay, if you thought that was clear, let's now turn to the health report.
Okay, so now let's talk about the health report. So our, our employee benefit account. If you look at, if you look at the very top, it will give you our total healthcare budget for the year. So where it says healthcare budget, that's our total amount. The really important thing that you want to take a look at is really where it says, where it says underneath deductions and claims. What we're, what we're really monitoring is, is to see where our monthly claim total average falls in comparison to where we thought it would be and to previous prior years. So you'll see that in July, we were looking at, you know, 217, 260. And then in October, we're up to 275. So we're creeping up a little bit with our claims, but that's still right in line with, at the bottom, where you see our prior three years average claim monthly is 278. So if our monthly claims are running right about that 270, the 250 to 270 range, we're in a good spot for our healthcare. We're one year, we're one month in the rears in Reading, because we get the report for the prior month on Monday of next week. And so, so, so this month, you're only seeing October, because we haven't gotten November's claims yet. And then next month, so it's always a little bit, a little bit in the rears in Reading, just because of the timing of your meeting and our, and our analysis report. But, but we're, we're in good shape with our health benefits account as well. I tried to just hit the high points.
You understand?
Yes, we.
So just to help, I was very confused by this when I started. The reason we look at this every month is because Reading runs, we don't have like an insurance policy through a direct carrier. We're essentially self-insured. And so we have a pot of money that we allocate at the beginning of the year that's used for essentially providing healthcare services to the staff. And so that pot of money, we look very closely at as we're going through the year, because in previous years, we went to the negative because of COVID and other things that happened. So it's like, that's something we have to watch every month as healthcare spending goes in. That's what we're looking at the monthly averages, because we're essentially the insurance company for all staff. And we looked at the cost benefit of going with the private insurance. And this was the best or the most cost-effective way for our district to manage the health insurance.
And so one of the things you'll, you'll do in about a month and a half is when I present the budget to you for the first time, it's the superintendent's budget. But after that, it becomes the board's budget. And you have to kind of work together to identify the priorities and the areas that you're going to support. But one of the areas is going to be health insurance. And you'll get. And you'll get an estimate from our, uh, insurance consultant uh, about how much insurance is going to go up next year. And then we'll start looking at what insurance is projected to increase. What do we have in our bank account? How claims are running? And um, and how much are we estimating next year that health insurance is going to cost? And so that's also challenging because we're really, we're forecasting um, well into the future.
So we'll do, I think, we, we'll do a full like hour session on that in January.
And, and we bring in our consultant as well.
Yeah, to walk us through. And so we'll like dive really deep into health and all of that work.
And, and so that's what we have for administrative reports.
Okay, great. Um, so that brings us to board committee reports. I want to thank the new boards that met for our last meeting though.
I would, I would just say there's the DEI task force meeting and on December 19th at 6 o'clock at Barlow.
Great. Um, okay, uh, so next to the discussion and possible action, the first item is the 2024 Board of Ed meeting calendar. So everyone should receive a copy of the draft calendar and your meeting materials.
It will last.
The last page. Um, do you want to walk through it? Do you want me to walk through it?
Um, well, I mean, these are the meetings that we typically scheduled in the past. Um, there's not, the, the only thing we need to take a look at.
Yeah, it's.
Is our budget meetings. And let me just see if I can run this up. Um, so. Typically, Redding Board meetings are every, at the first Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM. With the exception of the first Tuesday in January, where we flip-flop that and we have the Eastern Board meeting at 7:00 PM with the budget presentation. And so your first board meeting for January is actually on Thursday, January 11th. That's why you see that there as a regular board meeting where we present the budget. Uh, and um, and then you can see.
On Thursday.
And, and the following Thursday, which is, is a, is a budget workshop.
And then there's one other. So in July, July meeting, we meet the last, I think it's the last Tuesday, the 25th of June, because our budget closes at the end of June. So we'll wrap up any um, final expenditures so that Sarah can open up any final feels for us.
And the only other change that I would like you to think about is the February 6th and February 8th meeting. And um, so what we did, and this is what Eastern, um, Eastern made this change. The Eastern budget, because we're, because we're really discussing the budget primarily in um, these two months. Um, sorry, let me go back here.
It's 6:00 PM there.
Yes, and so, so what, what happened here is we typically have the, so the first Tuesday of the month, we have the Redding Board meeting and then we have a budget, a budget workshop. And then Eastern over here had their Eastern um, workshop. And, and what we did last year is we had these workshops on, on Thursday for the board meeting, on Tuesday and the workshop on a Thursday. And so what Ethan uh, did was we, we moved the 6 o'clock meeting here and we actually put it before the board meeting, right? So I'm going to take this away. Um, so this was an East, this was a kind of an interesting thing that Eastern tried is they moved their workshop from here, from 7:00 PM to before the, the actual meeting. So another option that you can consider is do you want to keep the, the workshop meeting on the Thursday at 6:00 PM? Or do you want to consolidate the meetings and have a workshop, budget meeting before 7 o'clock? Uh, meaning, uh, you, you don't need, you, you wouldn't do both of these. You would choose one.
I think it's good to consolidate when we can certainly use the hour to maybe stop time. But it's, it's, it's the third of our workshop meeting, so we may have been tightened up by them. Um, and we can always do the board event meeting and then adjourn it and then continue the workshop, I suppose, but.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I.
I think we should consolidate and see how it works out.
It does, yeah. We can always add another.
Do we have to keep both on the calendar? We can add both on the calendar and just cancel the, the 3:00 AM?
Yeah, that's a option too. So I say consolidate 6:00 PM and then do the 7:00 PM and remove the 8. If you need to have an additional one, you can always add it.
Okay, all right.
Right.
So um, so then I'm, I'm removing this.
Yeah, typically at that time of year, the board event agenda, even for the regular meeting.
Is budget mostly budget, right?
So you're just really starting earlier.
So I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna take that off then and then you just need to um, make that adjustment and remove the eighth, the Thursday, the Thursday, February 8th budget workshop and put it um.
At 6:00 PM on the.
6:00 PM on the 6, yeah, for.
And do both of the January meetings start at 7 or 6? I know we have to.
Uh, 7:00.
Okay. Okay, and then we have tribe board meeting in January, May and October, and those take place on the last Tuesday of March.
And, and those are at Barlow. I made that mistake.
Well, when did you say the DEI meeting was?
December 19th at 6.
At 6:00.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it's, yeah.
Yeah, December 19th, 6:00 PM.
Okay.
All right, that's really the going.
Okay, um, so I would look for a motion that the Redding Board of Education adopt the 2023 scheduled board meetings as presented with one revision, uh, where we would move the February 8th budget workshop to February 6th at 6:00 PM.
I would just say that 24, the 2024, I think you said 23. Did you say 23?
I did say 23, yeah.
Yeah, the uh, motion to adopt the 2024 meeting schedule with the, the changes Florida's brought.
Okay, so the second. Amanda? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. And that being both two student enrollment projections were planned for the back.
Okay, so I'm going to put this on the screen. Talk a little bit about student enrollment and also uh, give you a, a memo. If we just pop a couple of those down.
But Barry, you can go save the number.
Okay. So we typically talk about enrollment in December because um, it's part of the budget presentation that we, that we provide to you in January. We have a, an outside demographer, his name is Dr. Peter Prowler. And he gives us a 20-page report. And he looks at 50 years' worth of birth data um, in the area. And he studies the trends, um, current, pre, historic, current and future trends of, of enrollment. He looks at deaths, he looks at births, he looks at um, the percentage of students that go to private school and, and so on. And so this memo is kind of a summary of where we are enrollment-wise. Um, the first paragraph essentially says that Redding and Eastern, uh, and including the state has been um, experiencing an enrollment decline between 2012, 2020. Where Redding declined from 1,132 students down to about 804 students. And that um, decline in enrollment basically stopped just a couple of years ago. And now we're starting to stabilize and trend um, up. And enrollment is going to increase by about 400 students over the next 10 years. And we're going to rebound almost where we left off a few years ago. So by 2033, we're project, we're projec- projected to be having a total enrollment of 1,281. And so what that means next year is that we're increasing this year to next year by approximately 36 students. And as a result of that net increase of 36 students, we anticipate the small budget impact that we're still studying. This isn't set in stone yet. Um, but you can see here in the first table that we're currently at 864 students with 467 students at um, Redding Elementary School, 353 students at John Reed Middle School. And next year, we're projected to go to an increase five students at RES and 28 students at um, John Reed Middle School. Uh, and the difference between the 864 and the 900, even though you're only seeing uh, an increase of 33 is that we're including pre-K enrollment in that number. If you look at the second table, you can see that we currently have 44 students in pre-K. We're projected to have 47 students, uh, 47 students in pre-K next year. And then you've got enrollment projections broken out by grade level, kindergarten, first grade, all the way up to fourth grade because Redding Elementary School, as you know, is a pre-K through four. Uh, what we're a little bit unsure of is kindergarten. And as you know, the legislation has changed in kindergarten in terms of the entry age of, of students. We're still going to have an open approach and um, allow students to come to school even though the, even though the, if the birthdays are up to, to January. But regardless of that legislation, that legislative change, we often do wait to make a decision on kindergarten until as late as possible because unlike the number of students in kindergarten who we know are in our schools that go on to first grade and the students that go from first grade into second grade, uh, it's a little bit more harder to predict the number of students in pre-K that are coming into kindergarten because there are so many pre-Ks uh, in the area and, and students are even home uh, as well. But you can see the total enrollment um, for Redding Elementary School, including pre-K is going to go from 511 students to 519 students, which, which is a total pickup of eight. Um, and so the one, the one thing we're holding on there is how many sections we anticipate uh, in kindergarten. And so how many sections do we have at the moment, Melissa? So what we're looking at really is, are we going to have five sections next year, which will be one fewer section? Um, because Dr. Prowler is predicting 89. Or are we really going to end up with closer to what we have now, which would necessitate a sixth section, which is what we have? Uh, so we're, that's really what we look at in terms of how many sections that we have per, per grade level. If you look over at um, John Reed Middle School on the second page, there is a, a large fourth, a larger fourth grade cohort going up into grade five. And so at the moment, we have 86 students in grade five, but we're projected to have about 101 students. We have four sections in grade five at the moment. And um, Mr. Maris has requested a fifth section of fifth grade at John Reed Middle School. And so that's probably something that we're going to put in our budget. The other grade levels um, remain uh, about the same. Uh, overall, John Reed Middle School is increasing by 28 students. And then the last couple of points here are really just looking at uh, figure six and figure five here, looking at um, a- as I, what I mentioned to you, how many students are increasing, how many students are going, the students are going up to 2033, the next 10 years. And it shows uh, our enrollment kind of rebounding a little bit. And so going from um, approximately 865 students now uh, all the way up to um, 1,281, we're going to have to take a close look about, you know, what that means for the budget and for teachers and staffing over the next 10 years. But really, it's only a moderate increase um, next year, 28 students. So that's really the enrollment overview in terms of summary.
Any concerns about the eighth grade going from 75 to 104?
Um.
Jason, does this ever break out? It's, which especially means 52.
The um, no, we, the, the demographer report is straight numbers. It does not disaggregate the number of special education students in one school or the other. We have that data internally.
Okay, because I think that makes a big difference.
So, so we have that, we have the number of special education students uh, in our schools, broken out by school. Uh, we have the percent of the referrals over time. We have the number of IEPs per month. Uh, the number of 504 students. This, this, there's actually a page in your, in your packet for administrative reports that shows that level of data. But it's not in the, the demographer's report.
And I wouldn't be surprised if they're really, they're just all shifting out in kindergarten, maybe a second.
Right.
Yeah.
So when we present the budget, I'll present staffing. And obviously, there's a relationship between staff and enrollment. And this is just a kind of a preview uh, to that conversation. But when we present the budget again, obviously we'll refer to these numbers. Okay.
Do you have a question? Okay, um, do we have the staff report?
Oh, no, I think we made the table there.
Okay.
And we, we do present the staff report during the budget and we hope to present that tonight, uh, but it's still under development.
Okay, um, great. So we will see that, that is to the AFA conference.
Okay, so um, we have approximately $7,000 budgeted in our central office uh, account. And um, the superintendent usually goes on a conference each year. And so the, there's many conferences that I consider, but the one conference I usually like to go to is the National Conference of School, Public School Superintendent's. And uh, the, the reason why I'm bringing this up is you know, this is where I, I learn about, um, so here are some of the sessions. Um, there's some sessions on redesigning learning. There's sessions on school environment and culture. There's uh, sessions on school safety, finance and operations. And there's obviously a lot of information in sessions on um, leadership and um, you know, what, the, what the future holds for innovation and technology and, and so on. So um, it's conferences that I usually go to that I come back and I turn key information. So you know, elements of our strategic plan, for example, I just didn't invite to conferences. So um, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because I would like to go. And the way my contract is written at the moment is that you have to vote and support that I go on a national conference.
Um, I'll make a motion for, so we, we budgeted for it.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion for uh, Dr. McKinnon to attend the AFA uh, conference, let's be specific.
And the conference is around $800. I mean, we budgeted for a lot more professional development.
If anybody else want to go?
I'm gonna take it. Uh, thank you. Uh, well, we, we, it's a superintendent conference, but there are other conferences that our administrators attend. For example, our principals, we're putting money in their budget to attend a um, the National Principal Conference. Where is that held, Melissa?
Oh, there's a conference, well, our 24 will be a national event, but this past year was in Texas.
But those, you guys don't need our approval for that.
No, no.
Okay, that was the second thing, Megan. Yeah, same here. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, um, what passes, 7-0? All right, so that brings us to committee assignments. So um, the board conducts a variety of its business through, uh, through various committees. Typically, the committee would meet, um, they all have different schedules. They send you all the charges for, for most of them, for the writing ones. We also have tribe board committees that meet on, those ones meet a little bit less frequently depending on what they are. Um, so you know, typically the board or, sorry, the committee will meet for, you know, whatever its specific business is, and then they would come up with a recommendation, bring the recommendation to the board, the board to vote on something. So committees can't um, have to take any action to, you know, make expenditures or make decisions. So committees can't um have to take any action to, you know, make expenditures or make decisions on behalf of the board, but they would um vote to make recommendations to bring to the board. Um, and then you'll see during our regular meetings, we'll have um committee reports. So let's say a curriculum committee, for example, would meet. Um, then you come to the meeting and whoever the chair is would give their update to the full board so that um uh everyone kind of has a general understanding of what happened. Um, we will hopefully try to hold most of the committee meetings either virtually or at six P M before regular meetings, that board members who aren't on the committee could join them. Um, just so that folks can, you know, stay up to date if you're interested in something and want to know what's happening, but you're not on the committee and have a little bit deeper access to do that. Um, so we'll go ahead and uh make some appointments for some of the committees, we won't do all of them right now. This is mostly dependent on the ones that are meeting in the next couple of months or have this institute coming up. Um, so let's start with the curriculum committee, I know we have at least one spot to fill. John's already a member, so do I have a, anyone interested in the curriculum committee? All right, I will appoint Amanda to the curriculum committee. Um, the next one is facilities. We have the two spots to fill, Sharag and Megan. Okay, so I will appoint Sharag and Megan to the facilities committee.
Do you want also invite, put it in to make a proposal for that? Change it to invite the the manager?
No, um, she's actually already on the committee, so he'll just roll over, so friends, yeah. Um, the, we'll see, the bargaining team. Um, we need one person to join the bargaining team.
You go first.
Please, Celeste, you also, are you interested in that one?
Is that that collecting the?
Yeah, sure. Okay, okay, so I'll make Sharag and Celeste to the bargaining team. Okay, the calendar committee, this one's the tri board committee, the calendar committee needs once a year to um recommend the calendar for the following year or a series of calendars coming up. Um, and I need one person for that committee. Maria?
Um, I'm already on the bargaining committee, right?
Yeah. Okay, um. The D E I committee, the D E I committee, I think, needs like four times a year. Yeah, quarterly and maybe. Sharag is already on that committee, so we can uh take one more or we don't have to. All right, I'll find Amanda to the D E I committee. And let's see, the food service committee, that one also needs, I think. I, can I have a another volunteer? It it needs about once a year to update their contract. Are we gonna give you samples?
What?
Are we gonna give you the first chance?
Yeah.
Um, okay, and the transportation committee, this is also a tri board committee, so I just need one person, this this covers the uh transportation part of it. Okay. And I think that's all we need, um. We have a policy committee, if anyone is particularly interested in that too, I don't think we have to make an appointment right now, but I would be interested in that policy, okay. All right, so we will point Maria to the policy committee. Great, um, any questions about how committees work? Um, I think the main thing to understand is that they're all uh representative of the board, so they're all subject to um FOIA uh restrictions as well.
Where are the meeting dates and times?
Um, it uh they would be posted on the E R nine website and they should be posted on our town of Reading website too. I'm hoping, I think this year we'll try to send out in invitations to the whole board so everyone knows the meetings are coming up. Um, but they they it varies by.
The agenda gets sent to the board number even for, just like we got for board head agenda, they say, so I got a D I agenda already. I ordered it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, can you send out a contact info for everybody? I don't have email addresses for everyone.
Yeah. Great. Then that brings us to adjournment, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Sharag? Done, okay, all in favor? You go, you're adjourned at seven fifty-six P M.